No, I'm happy.
It's not too late. How good do they have to be?
They don't have to be good at all. They've got a US-based portion of our time.
I got some ex-educational ones. They're, they're in the bottom of the pile. They might use a lot of shit. Maybe they were paying us.
In the early days, the line would be, a bank's like, we can get one all the time.
Well, some are only threes, I think. These are good, I'll dig them out for sort of a different.
Teach the youngsters and don't write all the connects and pirating and that sort of thing.
Good evening, everyone. We have apologies from councillor Roger Aitken, so can you please give us someone to chair it to tonight?
Edward Paulson, Brian.
Um, okay, on happening to that, I was going to propose Andy, because he's done it quite a lot. That's what he did today. So, uh. Seconded by us, um. Yeah, I'm happy to do it. You carry on, buddy.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
I'll be standing in honour.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, welcome to the leisure youth and amenities meetings. Emergency evacuation procedures, there's quite a few of you here, in the event of a fire alarm, fire drill, or other emergency, please exit the room using the doors indicated. And assemble in the designated meeting points. Filming and recording of meetings in line with the openness of local government bodies' regulations, this meeting may well be filmed or recorded, it is being recorded, uh, by town council or members of the public. Item one on the agenda, submissions from the public. Yep, okay. Item two is to receive any apologies for absence. Roger.
I have apologies from Roger and the secretary, Colin.
Item three is declarations by members under the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two.
Yeah, I had to declare an interest, because I know that gentleman, um, my son attends his club, so I got an interest in eight point four point one.
Code in blood.
Yeah, code in blood, and it's already my declaration of interest.
Okay. Um, and also the representative on the Patchway, Hilton and Stokes Volunteer Centre.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, that's one. So, that is eight point one point three.
Everybody happy? Okay. Tom? No?
Okay.
Sure? Okay. And access by the chair, uh, none other than to say, have a lovely Christmas, everybody, and Happy New Year. It's a big honor to coordinate, so.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you very much. Item five is to confirm the minutes of the meeting, how on the fourteenth October two thousand and nineteen is the correct record, which I think I shared as well.
Yes, you did.
That's, that's in your pack? The information.
Yeah, yeah, can I propose?
Pete proposed, but Tom's in the first, so seconded. For which here, those in favour?
I was in there.
Seven over one extension, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, you're right.
Can you leave every page and sign about the last page, please?
There's a few talk comments as well. Twelve nineteen. My name is to go, it's all the way over. Showing people forward, so.
Yes, that is a good idea.
So I propose, as we've got quite a lot of members of the public here on the ground, so, side of things, if we move item. Eight, yeah, item in its entirety forward at this position. Seconded, Frank, those in favour? You know, that's excellent, thank you very much. Item eight is to deal with grant funding applications. Eight point one point one is Bradley Stoke Youth Cricket Club SLA.
We have all the information in the pack, and we have a representative from Youth Cricket Club here to answer any councillor questions.
Yeah, nothing further to add, but if there's any questions still free and open to us.
So that is a youth grant aid application, youth service agreement application of three thousand five hundred pounds.
Same as last year.
Yeah.
Sure, as of the scene, Edward Paulson.
Yeah, so it's proposed by Tom, three thousand five hundred on the SLA, and you second it. Brian?
Yeah.
Those in favour? You know, that's, thank you very much indeed.
Can I say, on the first page of this, it talks about young participants' importance in seeing and compare play. I think, um, just highlighted, actually, I think that's a very important thing right now, very important.
Wouldn't you agree? Thank you very much indeed for coming along.
And when is your recruitment time for the young people?
Sorry.
Young participation, do you have a recruitment time or wait your time for neurocrucies?
How are we recruiting? Um. Yeah, Tom.
No, God, you're too old.
No, it's all.
I'm asking you.
Uh, we rely, the last couple of years, on the All Stars cricket particularly, uh, which is the ECB initiative for five to eight-year-olds, so that's been quite successful, and we had a bit of help from the local cricket board in marketing that, so. Fingers crossed if we retain a decent number of those younger ones going forward, then that should be the bulk of our recruitment, I guess, at the bottom of the age pyramid.
Okay.
Even so, that would have been a few flyers and, um.
Usually what time they use to take neurocrucies? Usually what time you take neurocrucies?
What, eight?
No, we're not, we're not.
I'm sorry, um, our indoor nets start at early Feb. Uh, fourth of February, I think it is. And outdoors, the middle of April.
How much you got from last year, neurocrucies?
Ooh, new ones, that's a good question, um. It'd be a little bit of a gasp, but I reckon probably forty to fifty, including the All Stars group, probably had about fifteen to twenty-year-old recruit.
Do you have equal numbers of girls and boys, or do you recruit?
No, we don't, um.
Do you recruit girls as well?
We are trying, uh, as it happens, there's a sort of spin-off from the All Stars cricket that's coming in this year, and again, it's a national initiative, um, for sort of eight to eleven-year-olds, um, and we're going to use that as a girls-only opposition. So we're going to wait and see if that brings more girls in.
Okay, so you are going to be trying to get them working?
Yeah, we have been for the last couple of years, we are slightly scuppered that we've got a very good girls' cricket club just over in Franchak, but it's a little bit of a snob effect there, I think, so. Uh, if people know about that, they may well prefer to go there, particularly if they, a little bit unsure maybe of playing mixed cricket with the boys, so we're hoping that we can offer girls-only opposition this year. As previously, we've just included them with the boys.
But is something that you're interested in and are actively looking at?
Yeah, we had a women's team start up last year.
Okay, great.
So this is the next natural progression, but it's, um, you will see how it feels this year.
And everybody, thank you very much for coming here to support your application.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I would just need, um, details, an email or through to anyone who's successful tonight on their applications.
Sure, yeah.
Preferably tomorrow if possible, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, item eight point one point two is the four towns in the Bayonne, that's what again you brought to happen, and, uh.
The service agreement agreement is same as last year, um, which is two thousand four hundred and four pounds and twenty four times.
I've been close, I've been close, because some people do do a solid good job, especially of, um.
Especially as now they do look particularly for brackets today.
Yeah.
Funny enough, I stuck down here today.
Yeah, and one of the things, if we're not being better, are we using a two thousand and fifty, two thousand and fifty, that's specific to that one, that's what comes out, that's what's associated with that. Second thing is, three people mentioned that they want more of the drivers, and they're like, yeah, and they're having a best one.
Split the short drivers.
Sure. It's interesting, because when we actually look through, unless you go and say, I don't want to do this, or anything, because it's a great thing to support, um, because they've got nine and twenty-plus members, and then they talk about, uh, twenty-five passengers being from Bradley Stoke. Um, so I'm assuming that out of nine and thirty members, we've only got twenty-five people in Bradley Stoke, which are members, and it's weirdly slightly differently. So I think in, in reality, as the councillors are supporting this, I think we ought to put something on the website or something with a newsletter or whatever, to say that people, you know, we pay towards this.
Yeah.
Describe what it is, and say if you want to use the service, this is who you contact, because it does appear, um, that it's being used predominantly by people from outside of Bradley Stoke.
Could do a some promotion.
And we're not putting a small amount of money into it either, it's, it's, you know, it's a reasonable sum of cash.
We always advertise on our notice boards, they normally have, they send us posters from the cricket.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yes, we can definitely do.
Because if you take.
And it is on our website, there is a link through to that on the website, so.
Yeah, if you take twenty-five people, then that's a hundred pounds per person, isn't it?
I think coverage in Bradley Stoke from that, we only started last year, didn't it?
No, that was a process.
No, they did, yeah, really going.
Wasn't there a specific group in Bradley Stoke that started?
No, no, and they take, um, people for hospital appointments and things like that, sometimes for shopping and everything. But one other thing, as Brian mentioned, we could actually advise, like, community transport, we are actually supporting community transport through four towns mailing, you know, something like that, so then we, it's actually, we are actually funding, okay, that's one thing, and also the mention to four towns and mailing that, supported by Bradley Stoke towns, so, you know, rather, it's, it's majority change, maybe coming from other people, maybe.
You, you can understand to a certain extent, because a lot of the group people in Bradley Stoke are quite more affluent, and a lot do actually still have their own transport, so you can understand why in some areas it is more successful than others, but yeah, I agree with what you're saying.
But there are many people who rightly something, who doesn't know these things, so we need to, then, from, this is actually, we agree, from the residents' pocket, we need to inform the residents that we are actually providing this on the surface, or supporting this on the surface, with that.
It's, it's a good service, and we have got areas of deprivation in Bradley Stoke, and that is definite, so it might be an affluent area, but it, it's not necessarily, you know, just, everyone's got loads of money, you're probably.
Well, definitely, when you look at the census information, you can see that that is the situation.
Absolutely.
Yes, with that, I support the motion.
Okay.
So I think you language it.
I think proposed it, yeah, so it's seconded by Tom, those in favour, supporting the SLA? You know, that's, thank you very much. Eight point one point three is Patchway, Hilton and Stokes Volunteer Centre, you're bothering.
Oh, I have to go.
I have to go, yeah. She's going out because she's the founder of the representee on the group, and it's a financial thing, if it was just a normal report, we wouldn't have moved it, it's a financial thing.
Yes.
Right, okay, the, uh, Patchway, Hilton and Stokes Volunteer Centre are applying for a service level agreement of one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight pounds, and you have the report in your own pack.
Yeah, okay, um, one thousand. Which are the other organisations who will support the audience?
So, um, support the, do you mean financials?
Yeah.
We get some from Southgloss Council, and we get some, um, money from each of the other three town and parish councils, so Patchway, Hilton and Stoke Gifford.
And CBS Southgloss, which is on.
That's the Southgloss money, comes through CBS.
Yeah. Anything from Southgloss?
Um, no, because we are southern brooks, so, um, we have to get the money to come in to be able to afford to run it.
So it's.
Do you have a bank of volunteers?
Yeah.
Um, no, so we go out, what we are, is we're a brokerage service, so, um, I have about six hundred odd volunteer roles on my database, and, um, I go out and do drop-ins, I promote the roles that we've got, and I promote them on our Facebook page, and I send them to CBS. Um, and we're very much a brokerage service, so somebody will come to me and say, I'd like to volunteer, and we sit down and we have a conversation, and some conversations are very easy, because they come and say, I want to volunteer in childcare, right, we've got this, this and this, and they go, I want to do that, and we get, put them in touch with the organisation, some is much longer, because they come and sit down and they say, I want to volunteer, these are my issues, um, I don't know what I want to do.
Hmm.
So they're much longer conversations.
Okay, so you s, do you keep a, little base of all the volunteers that also people who approach you?
Yes.
You have to, if you use that for reporting figures, don't you, back to CBS, you have to send that quarterly reports?
I sort of proposed the full amount.
Yeah. Brian?
Um, yeah, I second that, but we'd like to, um, sort of ask the question, um, I mean, where have we got a paragraph where it's supporting volunteering in Bradley Stoke, um, you, you've got like a little list there of, um, Tom, you've actually done certain things here to advocate the, you know, ab, 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 advocate the service. What we'd like to say is, there's a lot of people, generations getting older now in Bradley, so there's a lot of people moved in, and as people leave work, often they have got that sort of urge to sort of feel useful and do something, so your, you know, thing is extremely, extremely important, so I'm just thinking, you know, that, that, you know, because you've got a lot of people working, living here, and I have actually been approached in the past by a few people in Bradley Stoke, so I brought you the interaction of the volunteer section, so I don't know if we can actually do any, just like posting anything.
Sharon has, um, the dates that I'm in the Bro, Volunteer Library, in the library, you can just volunteer, so I send them through.
Is there any kind of thing you could put, you know, for us here, for, for in here, or not, or something, because you're doing one in the library, we've got one.
We do one in the library, we can certainly look at coming, if you want me to come and do one in here, I can come and do additional, we, you know, we're looking at how we can improve the service and how we can reach more people, so if that's something that you want me to come here and do on, um.
Have you been to the Bradley Stoke Senior Friends Group?
No.
And Young at Heart as well, that's two groups.
No, so norm, normally it's people coming to me to say that they want to volunteer, but also we're looking at ways of linking with more people at the moment.
So I could give you a list and times and meetings of like the more sort of older members of the community.
I mean, that would be really good, because if you could then, you know, write to them, because if you've got the address, just write them a simple letter and say, look, we are here, um, you know, please contact us, just a little thing, because it may well actually push a few more buttons.
Okay.
Uh, for people who want to volunteer for, with vulnerable groups, say the elderly or in childcare, do you do background checks and things on them?
So we don't, but the organisations would, but the organisations would know which roles needed those checks and which roles didn't, so if you work for the charity that works with vulnerable people, but you're in a back office, you possibly wouldn't have that check, but the organisation would do that.
Franklin.
Sure. With your statements here, I will say two hundred and forty negative, how are you going to get it funded?
So, so that is partly because our funding from Southgloss has dropped this year.
Oh, okay.
Um, and it's dropped by quite a lot, it's dropped by about six hundred, eight hundred pounds this year, um, so I, um, it's something I can go back and check with my land manager, what she is sort of doing about it, because she's sort of more strategic than I am.
Oh, okay.
So she has all the budgets, and I just come and do these meetings and come and talk about the work that I'm doing.
Yeah, I think I also suggest we have the members' funding available as well, so if you need any subsidies, I think you can apply to Southgloss County Council's funding for the councillors' budgets.
That's member awarded funding, yeah, through Southgloss Council, you are aware of that?
Catherine probably is, I don't know what Catherine's, Catherine's put some things through for some funding for the volunteer centres as a whole, so, um.
But I mean, there's lots of local councillors that cover the area, Southgloss councils that cover the areas that, that you do, so they're, yeah, listed to tell you for.
Yeah, you could, you could hear something, yeah. Okay.
You have three thousand pounds a year, which you can award to various different bits and pieces.
Yeah.
Where, that's, that's necessary.
Five hundred. Three. Yeah, you have a maximum of five hundred, which will cover our, and there's negative balance, yeah.
Probably quite, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Franklin.
Okay.
Okay, so it was, uh, proposed by Dan, seconded by Brian.
Yep.
Those in favour? You know, that's.
Yeah, they said nine.
Thank you for letting me in.
Eight point one point four is the Southglossshire Chinese Association, and then I report in my.
Southglossshire Chinese Association are applying for a service level agreement of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four pounds and thirty-seven pence.
No, no, but the thing is, because they're doing every, uh, for the communities, for the helping, doing the programs, they're doing.
Do you see a lot of them, and there's different friends in that, right, seconded by?
Well, they use office services here, anyway, I don't know.
Yeah, they spend the bulk of the grand on hiring workers here.
So I propose.
I think I said. Those in favour? Again, you know, that's, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the end of the service level agreements. There are a few which are still outstanding, which is Christ King Youth Group, um, Victim Support, I have sent them both reminders and have acknowledgements back, although it does clearly say in the service level agreement document that we're not supposed to send reminders, but my conscience always gets the better of them, so I do send them a lot of them out.
Don't let them victim care.
Sorry?
Don't let them victim care.
It took me a while to track down someone actually for victim support, because they didn't apply for grant funding last year, despite two reminders, um, but I did actually manage to speak to someone specific this year, who said that they would pass it on to the person that dealt with it, but that was the twentieth of October, but there's only so much I can do.
Don't give them no money?
That's what I, I just think about.
That's, that's, that's kind of terrible, that, that.
There is so much I can do.
Okay. Moving on to community development grant aid, item eight point two, eight point two point one is Bradley Stoke Radio, CBA twenty-eight.
We have representatives from Bradley Stoke Radio to speak things of the application.
Yes.
Um, thank you very much for your time, it's lovely to be here, um, I've come down as a director of Bradley Stoke Radio, I've brought with me a board, because I think it's nice to see pictures of some of our members, Bradley Stoke Radio being, um, a community group that's run entirely by volunteers, um, in the community or around Bradley Stoke. Everyone gives up time they can to keep us on air and presenting, keeping our tech running smoothly, keeping the studios organized and tidy for the live musicians that come in, doing all the adling and paperwork, um, keeping the bank accounts balanced, complying to emails, answering telephones and making cups of tea as well, um, we're always looking for new volunteers, and we, um, do greatly appreciate the support that Bradley Stoke town council provides to keep the, um, the, the rents paid and electricity paid to keep us on air and, and to keep us running, I suppose. Um, I'd like to introduce one of our newer members to you tonight, this is Jason, and, um, Jason, just like to spend a couple of minutes telling you what Bradley Stoke Radio means to him.
Yeah, yeah, um, in two thousand and eighteen, I moved to Hilton, and, um, I've been interested in radio all my life, I've been interested in personal issues, issues that affect people, such as relationships, things like that, and, um, I became a volunteer back in October with Bradley Stoke Radio, I've got my own show, and I've trained in there to be a volunteer, and I have to say, the human experience of being valued for the skills I offer, um, the radio station, and the radio station is, is literally an outlet for my creative skills, I'm, I'm very creative, very intuitive, and I can express my personality through the radio station, I can give back to presenters and serve the community, and it's, it's, it's a wonderful freedom that I get back from, uh, the community and give back, it's a huge thing I give to the community, it's great, it's, it's lifted my spirit from on the roof, and I've gone to make a difference for people at Bradley Stoke and the surrounding area, and I, I thank, um, Bradley Stoke Radio for accepting me on the team, and I'm very pleased to be here this evening, and, um, for our case for the station, um, one way or another.
Very much indeed.
Thanks, thank you. Okay. And how many members, such members, is to join?
Um, members now are up to, uh, sixty, sixty-seven, um, yeah, so we're constantly, uh, increasing or getting new interest, um, so I say sixty-seven, we've got, um, a young lady who's interested in joining us at the moment, and she's coming in just to, to test out how it could work for her, um, yeah, so a, a wide range of volunteers as well, our youngest is fourteen, and our oldest is, I think, about eighty-four at the moment, so it really is a community group in itself that, um, accepts anyone and everyone across the boundaries, and it's really great, because the older people are mentoring and supporting the new people that come in, and across generations as well, so I'd say we are probably covering four generations of people within our membership, supporting each other, mentoring each other.
How have you managed, how have you managed the station, is it a two to four seven kind of thing, is it?
Um, so we are community run at the moment, we're a team, um, of people who are taking on different aspects of the running of the station, and we're meeting exclusively every, uh, six to eight weeks, um, in, in person at the radio station and through Skype as well, if people can't attend physically due to distance or commuting, um, so we have people that are particularly interested in the technical side of things, that have taken that on, um, the training and development side of things, the programming and scheduling, so, um, yeah, there's about eight people at the moment, so a broad committee of people that are all taking on different roles, uh, working really hard because of station running.
Because it's a big responsibility, as volunteers, how much, how many hours you spend a week?
How many? So I.
Spend it with your husband, obviously.
Yeah, I, yeah, um, so I spent. Yeah, I, yeah, um, so I spent all day Monday in the radio station, um, nine till three, around the school day. Um, Friday afternoons, I'm in the radio station as well, escorting a mentor. I spend most mornings and most evenings on my emails, Sunday afternoons I nip out and open the station and lock it up. So, yeah, I live quite close by, so it's, it's okay.
Okay.
I think it's great that you're bringing together isolated members of the community and creating a sense of, you know, not feeling lonely as well. Um, just wanted to ask, when people come in and they get all the training to use the facilities, um, how do you do that? Is it done free or, um, is it all done voluntarily?
Yeah, so everyone involved in the radio station is a volunteer, all, all the way through. So, um, the, the training is done through a couple of sessions that are fairly structured, introduction to the systems and how they work, the technical side of things. And, and then it's through mentoring, the studio is, uh, quite, quite a busy place now, sometimes, you know, you're, there'll be sort of, one person will be in for a few hours, but within that time, two, three, four, five, six people will come in and out, and if anyone's got a question, they'll just ask it to the room. And there's a lot of mentoring and peer support that goes on once those initial sort of sessions have taken place, and, and people are getting the hang of things. But it's very much, um, get in there and, and have a go, pretty much from the word, word go, it took me about three weeks.
It took me about three weeks, but I, I have to say, um, the human experience of feeling valued, um, and it reduces social isolation.
Mm-hmm.
That's a wonderful thing to be part of the community, community radio, it's a phenomenal thing to have, and, you know, to, to give back.
And at the moment, we're just talking about the community of the volunteers at the radio station.
Um. Yes, right, yeah, that's right, but, um, yeah, it's, it's, I've, I've got my chance here to, my whole life's calling has literally been, you know, as, as a fan of, of community life, it's just wonderful, and, um.
And of course, we represent the rest of the community through the content that we broadcast, and we're constantly developing that as well.
And of course, good thing is as well, as, as I'm, as I've learned the training, when new people come along, I can also help them out as well. It's a sort, I can pass on my information about learning the systems and that sort of thing, and, and I've picked up remarkably quick, it's really good.
Right.
And, and they're friendly, it's friendly to you, you know, it's a family, you know, you will get on well, it's, it's wonderful.
Tom?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I can understand that part of the game, already seen how important that community radio is. I propose the full amount of two thousand and two thousand and sixty one, possible?
Four thousand, four thousand.
Four thousand.
Four thousand, yeah, four thousand, yeah.
See, it plays in the format of four thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Seconded by.
Or seconded.
Seconded by Nikki.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, um, Steve seconded, he, you know, I've been involved with the station, I'm no longer a member at the moment, but the reality is, it really is at the heart of Bradley Stoke, and they've done more than that, and I think they've done as well. I mean, it's actually the matter of taking Bradley Stoke to a different level, Bradley Stoke was actually considered by a lot of people, it was a joke at one point, but it's broken.
Yeah, yeah.
And I remember when I was there, I hardly knew that an official from the, from the radio, uh, I couldn't have been, uh, the, the chief of, we, we have got a favorable community in Bradley Stoke, and the radio station actually supports all that community and more. And, you know, we've been working around South Gloucestershire, New Bristol, public side of the name, Bradley Stoke is definitely, uh, on the map.
And just to say, we mentioned Radio Bristol a few years ago, and Radio Bristol in the leisure centre, and we joke about South Gloucester, but it was a particular comment.
Yeah.
Um, that has completely changed around now, there were customs about, uh, what a good centre, they're all going, and then that was actually taken by Radio Bristol. Our, our, our recording was taken by Radio Bristol, and they used that for the morning, and they asked us, they came to us and said, can we take your audios? You know.
Which, which is a big change.
So, yeah, it, it's, it has changed significantly, but, yeah, we're not taking, don't take them in that, Bradley Stoke anymore, they're coming and asking us.
I've got, I've got a phone call. Hope.
You've still got a copy of that, but I'll give it back.
Yeah, it's actually, it's on Nick's plan, so we can go and, and listen to it.
On Nick's plan.
Yeah, go to the, the radio station website, um, listen again, and then search the, you should be able to find it.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
Those in favour? You have a question?
Thank, thank you very much, very appreciative, I did have classes today, so if anyone had a bit of class, and we'd like a class today.
Yeah.
This is my, my mission to give that.
There, there's, there's sounds sad, you might put your hands up, just tape them back.
So I'll leave them on the table, and as I go out, you can take one of them out, and then, if there are any left over, leave them in the public area, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on to eight point three grant aid. Yeah, I, eight point four, sorry, youth grant aid, eight point four point one, Y G A forty two, scratch code for kids. Did you want to say anything, Theo, or?
Um.
I'm going to say what I know.
There's, there's not too much to say, except that in the beginning, um, we were a code club, there's many code clubs, okay? And then it turned out that, um.
This is computer coding for young people to, to learn how to code on computers, which is obviously very important these days, just, just to clarify that.
Then, then what had happened was, we had migrated from coding over to, um, physical computing, which is the integration of electronics and, um, real world devices operated by children's codes called Scratch, okay? And we started out with one computer and three kids, we're currently running about sixty kids a week, but we're needing a lot more equipment, because what's happening is the kids aren't leaving, they're staying, they're starting at about four and a half years, and they're going as high as fourteen, from there, they, they take advice to go to various colleges. Um, but what I'm doing at the moment is I'm needing to improve some of my facilities, hence the request for a, um, a bit of funding to get my laptops up and running, um. The, the current scenario is I'm running Raspberry Pi computers, which is a nice economical base, it's an easy base, it's, it's, it's linked directly to physical computing. We, we had, um, an invitation which I had to decline because of funding purposes, um, to talk to the International Space Station. They've got two Raspberry Pis in the space station, and they'd asked us to, um, work with them to get some code working, but the funding wasn't available at the time, and we had to let that go, but we're hoping to carry on with that maybe for next December again, or we'll try that again.
Okay.
Tom?
Thank you, Theo, uh, you mentioned that you're doing a program every Saturday morning at the Christ King, is that right?
Yes, we're running every Saturday, yeah.
And forty kids are there, right, uh, from our list?
Sorry?
Forty children from the primary.
Um, the children are currently, but older than what they were in the beginning, they started at four in the beginning, but, um, we've got no more four year olds at the moment, we've got quite a few applications, and the oldest are fourteen, and we've got about a sixty forty split between girls and boys.
Do you take new children, or is it limited?
No, we don't limit them, because, um, when a person shows an interest in this particular subject,
Yeah.
they need to be satisfied and involved directly at the same time. So, um, with the, with my original organisation, which ran, we ran at the library, we had a waiting list, but I had eight people in the club. We had a waiting list of more than two hundred, and it became an absolute crisis, because by the time you're inviting somebody into the club, six months later, they, they're going to do swimming or ballet or whatever they're doing. So my current policy is that whoever requests to come into the club, and providing they, um, complete the application form, um, may come to the club, have a taster, and if the taster is in the, you know, in, in, in what the kids are enjoying and understanding, then they will join up and then they will start.
Okay.
And the, the, the lessons are flexible in that we don't limit them to a particular time. So the early bird gets the worm, some of the kids actually come in at, at half past eight, and they leave at one o'clock, and they've learnt an awful lot of stuff in that time.
How much do you charge, do you charge?
I don't charge.
So it's all voluntary?
All voluntary, yeah, the reason, the reason is that for me it's a lot less complicated to do that. Um, charging becomes very complicated, um, you have your insurances, you have other complications. Whereas at the moment, I work through, um, um, I M E C, I E T and, um, the STEM Ambassador Hub, and between them, they keep me running with insurances and, uh, legal documentation, whatever I'm needing is basically coming through them.
So it's run as a community group, and?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Charles, if that, I, I'd like.
Okay, Elaine's got a question also, Nikki.
So I was actually going to propose it.
Oh, okay, all right, so.
Yeah, just have a question.
Okay, Nikki.
Um, so how many teachers do you have, um?
Um, that's a bit of a sore point, I ca, I'm, I'm having a problem getting people to engage at a technical level. So, um, I'm, what I do is I teach the older children, and they become quite well equipped, so we've got three at the moment.
So you're.
And then I teach the parents to help with their own children.
Okay.
But at, at quite a high technical level.
Okay.
But, um, the only technical person in the club is me.
Okay.
Um, it'd be nice to get a few more volunteers coming through.
Is it, okay, I can definitely help you with that.
Out of interest, what, what was the, the actual costings behind the project that you couldn't afford to be part of with the space station?
So I'm not picking up all that?
How much was the space station that captured, what, what, what were the financial implications of working with them?
Um, it was going to be mainly training, because I started a project, we have little Raspberry Pi computers, that's a little computer about that size. And, um, um, Yankee Candles have given me some screens, some monitors, and with that I made quite a nice, um, terminal. But we needed to improve that by getting a little console with a amplifier and headphones. And I actually managed to buy most of the equipment, but I just haven't had the time to put it all together, and then, once it's all together, um, to do the training on that, um, so we kind of fallen a bit by the wayside on that.
I was just asking, because it's a great opportunity for, for children locally to get involved in something like that, so I would suggest, separate from what we're talking about today,
Yeah.
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 if an opportunity like that comes around again,
Yes, yeah.
to come and speak to us again, and we may be able to help with funding for it, because it's just such an important opportunity.
Yeah. It could. Yeah.
Something that's, uh, very big to be involved in.
I don't know.
Okay, so, uh, if I, if I take Elaine's proposal, she was waiting first and then the second?
I, I had proposed already, yeah, that's okay.
You should.
I think Elaine proposed it, I think.
Yeah, Elaine, Elaine proposed for us, but, but I didn't get to Elaine.
Okay, Elaine proposed.
Tom seconded.
And that's the four hundred and ninety nine pounds and ninety eight pence.
For the full amount.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, those in favour?
Can I, can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
You must be getting all this, because I was reading through this, and, uh, it just seems genius, I mean, it's a completely off the wall idea, and I think it's great. I mean, it's a very good thing which you're doing, and initially I was thinking, wow, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
And the lovely thing is, it fits in with.
So, it's very, very different to the things you've done in the past, so.
As well, schools have started to do it as well, aren't they?
Yeah, so it fits in with what they do in schools as well.
Yeah. But to do this in person, it's actually great.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm starting, um, a full day course, um, next year at, um, Holy Trinity School. Sorry, at, um, at Little Stoke, I've offered both the schools, but, um, Little Stoke have taken up the offer. So I'll be doing, um, in-depth, um, computing science with year three, four and five, and it'll be a, during school activity, they'll just, they're a group of eight or nine kids at me throughout the day. And, because the, the concept in the, it, it started with the after-school concept, but the point is, is not enough time for that. Because they, they build a complicated Lego design, um, they then have to add the electronics on to that, then they've got to code that. They've got to fine tune, make it work, then they've got to modify it, and then they've got to let their imagination go wild and make it do things. And I'm finding they're building and then they're breaking it down, so that's been a bit of a downfall.
Do you mind if we, do you mind if I come along just to see what you do?
Sorry?
Do you mind if I come along just to see what you do?
You're all absolutely welcome, yeah?
I'd love to see it.
We run every Saturday from half past eight.
That's good as well, it was nineteen eighty five when I did my programming.
Also, if you stuck for audio and you want some audio amplifier or something for that project you were talking about, you've got my contact details, give me a shout out.
Yeah, actually that can be really helpful, because, um, I've been struggling, struggling a little bit, um, to try and get, because, you know, the hall I'm running at the moment is one of the halls of the C T K church, and it's, the, the acoustics is not very good. And what I was trying to do was to improve the ability to talk to the people above the level of, 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 of the drum of the, um, classroom.
Give, give me, give me a shout outside council, Theo, my, my details are on the website, can you, send me a email?
Yeah, I'll certainly do that, thank you, yeah.
See if I can, okay.
No, certainly I'll do that.
Thank you so much for coming up, and thank you for what you do for the community, I appreciate it.
Thank you for listening to us, yeah, okay. And like I say, you're all more than welcome to come down and help out, and, um, if there's volunteers that are technical, we will look forward to getting some of those.
I hope we've come up with a bit.
Like I say, it is, it is a bit technical, you know.
Right, right, right.
You know, I've had people coming down, but then they, they, they back out because it's, the content is too technical at the admin level. The kids are loving it, and at four years old, they're building quite amazing robots.
I, I feel a lot about it, I have, I have to say, so, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Eight point five large grant aid, one, so back to eight point six.
Let's get holding. Oh, yeah.
Fab, come back.
Fab.
Yeah, that's a fantastic view. Okay. I do suggest to deal with any matters arising from the Benetton meeting, I have on a forty, forty table nineteen, not come elsewhere on agenda, six point one, is that they all work away activity centre site development?
Right, I have an update from John Mapple, which says, um, following on site meetings and many discussions with neighbouring parish councils and local residents who have expressed concerns of the excessive light pollution to their property, we are now in a position to move this forward and start phase two.
Thank you.
Have a nice Christmas, guys.
Thanks, Theo.
And I need, I will need your bank account details, Theo.
Theo, you need to get your bank.
You can just send me through an email to your bank account details.
Sure, I can do that, thanks.
Brilliant, thank you.
Thanks for your mention, okay.
Yeah, start again, please.
Okay. Following on the site meeting, this is an update from John Mapple.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks. Go on again.
Do you talk it?
Yes.
Do you like that, would you like to, yes?
Right, I will start then. Update on Brookway Activity Centre Site Development. Update from John Mapple, who is currently in town to determine his management. But, following on site meetings and many discussions with neighbouring parish councils and local residents who express concern over excessive light pollution to their property, we are now in a position to move this forward and start phase two. We've already authorised the installation of additional hedging to the boundary line, which will help shield any headlamp lighting from cars using the active to set the site. The job will, that will tie all the tweaks together, is to install bollards in front of the overflow car park, allowing the site staff to control parking usage. The bollards will be operated by the site staff and will be shut at the end of each working day, before scout group and radio station take over for the evening session. Uh, we've now received the quote, and John will be looking through the budgets with the R F S town clerk on Wednesday, and will then be in contact with chairs of council to get their, and committees to get their go ahead. It would certainly be good if we could get this finalised and agreed before I leave, so that I know the site operation will be in good working order going forward. The local residents and the local councillor are both very happy with the suggestions we have made.
Billy?
Yeah, um, regarding the light pollution, I had an email from, um, a gentleman, he's asked me not to give his name. And he sent me a picture of what's on one of the residents' walls, and I've got the picture here, and it's a very, very bright light, that if anybody walks past, that triggers it, and it's like one of these, if you're in a football stadium. And that is opposite the car park. So, I can't get why this resident's saying that there's a lot of light pollution coming from cars, when he's actually got his own lights like that. If you want to have a look, he's got one here, and he's got one here. So I think it needs to be questioned, why is that resident complaining about light pollution, when he's got lights that's probably ten times brighter than headlights? So if you want to pass, John, so that John can actually see that, um, if he wants the email from the gentleman, I'll grab his stewardess.
Okay, noted any comments?
So what's the, what's the parking restriction going to be now on the bollard section?
Well, it's not needed at night anyway, so it's only during the day when, like, if you have South Gloucester, if you have bookings in, it's very rare that there would be any at night. So it's very similar to the, um, open car. it's very rarely that there would be any at night, so it's very similar to the, um, open car park down there. The bollards will be in place at the end of the working day, going into the night, so there won't be an impact with those lights.
Can I suggest that we don't have a rerun of chain gate though?
No, there won't be.
Because of our chain gate. When the car is closed off the car park to stop the dogs going across with the chain, which causes no end of problems.
Oh.
I could, I could see that it makes a lot of sense because there is no need for that overflow car park in the evenings.
You still want people picking up chains, do you?
No, exactly, not, especially not in the garden. Okay, thank you for that, Elaine. That's noted and we'll go across to John. Anybody else? Anybody happy with that one?
Just about those lights on people's houses, there, is there a way for that person to adjust that? Or is it like it's set and they've brought that light and they?
It's like a security light, so when you walk past, it, it, it's, it lights up. But this gentleman said it actually blinds you when you're walking past.
Because there was something by the police, a statement for safety, that said, make sure you have your lights, the sensor lights, in order. But I guess the brightness level is, you know, varies. So it's not like the security lights are set to all have really bright lights, are they?
No, I think you have all, you can have all different levels of light, there's just enough so that you can actually see somebody's there. But as this gentleman states, when he walked pa, when he walked past it, it blinded him.
Yeah.
So I can't, I can't understand why, getting complaints about the, the car park lights coming into his house, yet he's got great, two great big lights like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's the reason why you can't send a letter and with a copy of that, I'm not just saying the complaint is coming.
Well, it's not, I don't think that's that.
It was a complaint to me.
Yeah, the resident would need to complain to South Gloss and they would look into it as environmental pollution, I don't think it's a problem.
There isn't complaint.
Getting hold, you know.
Surely they should make a complaint to the proper authority?
He sent it to me to, because of me being on Brumstone Town Council and because of, um, the, uh, things about to do with the lights, obviously he's been pretty dearly to the thing, so you can't say that.
Was it in any of the journals or any, about that discussion? Was it?
In the journal, no.
Was it?
No, power.
No, it was a directed.
We were in a tense meeting and that's where that, that's where that was discussed, but it was, it was recorded. The light pollution issue was, I think, has been publicised, I've definitely read it.
Yeah, that was, that was to do, yeah, that, I don't think it was to do with his lights, it was to do with the cars and it's just.
No, 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 I know, but I, that's what I mean, the, the light pollution complaint in relation to our planning application was noted in the public domain elsewhere.
Relating to the original lighting that was there, assuming so.
Yeah, so what we, what, what the complaint we received, that, that, that issue was publicised, which is then, obviously then triggered that response. But all I'm saying is I just think it's a bit strange that, well, you'd have to go back to the person and say they need to, if they've got a genuine complaint about it, they have to go to the right.
Which would be South Gloss, environmental.
My, 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 um, my parents, so I attend that meeting, so there was a, was it, that news in the public domain afterwards?
I think, yeah, it would be when John Butler, the, the two residents was here, yeah, that would have gone into the, that would have gone into the minutes.
Well, the journal was here anyway.
Yeah, and I'm sure I've read it on, um, comments online as well, on various different articles about stuff.
Is it, sorry?
So. Right, okay, yeah.
Okay, six point two of the, on the provision of leisure equipment, what is your opinion?
That's covered two, for four.
In Graham's update?
As a six point three.
As a six point three, in which case we'll move to item seven, uh, to deal with matters of self-referring to work within the scope of the Leisure Youth and the Metis Committee. So point one, a youth development and participation worker update, please.
Graham Baker.
Right, um.
We'll have that tabled.
I'll emphasise the, the headline bits as per usual, um. Yeah, all the regular youth work sessions have been taking part, um, place during this period, um. The, we've had, the weather on Thursday nights has been particularly appalling. So a lot of the sessions we would have done here at the Jubilee, outdoor settings, we've actually, uh, done a building at the skate park and redirected people. Uh, and again, that, that building is proving to be very valuable because, um, when we first had it put in, if there was, if it, things were sort of rained off at the skate park, we would have like a limited amount of young people. But now just people expect us to be open there regardless of the weather, which we are. Um, and, um, yeah, so although the weather's been appalling with people are sort of making their way over to the skate park and we're, we're having very fruitful and productive sessions there. Uh, we still need, I'm gonna touch on later, we still need to, um, finalise the plans for the inside under young volunteers. I now have sort of linked to that. I have two young people who are year twelve students and they have to do a volunteering element. And they're now, uh, one, the, the female volunteer is working, being on a regular basis now every week. Uh, the, there's a male volunteer now who's doing like a product design thing. He's really interested in doing some drawings and working up some CAD drawings and things like that for how we can do out the inside of it, contain and develop it into the three spaces that we've talked about before, which I thought would be really good. And again, it's trying to promote ownership of what we're doing. We've finally got three quotes for the outside paved area, which we talked about, which has got that sort of very temporary horrible surface, which at this time of year gets soaked in wet and tread loads of dirt into the buildings in the summer. It dries out and you get loads of dust blowing in the skate parks. Um, we're sort of fine-tuning those quotes, I was talking to Sharon about this earlier. And I will be, hopefully, that proposal then is going to full council for the approval of the actual contractor and then we can get on with that, um, early in the new year. Um, girls' project is, um, going really well. We've had quite a few new, it's incredible really, because we haven't done any promotions in the school for a little while. Um, um, but people are just, new members are coming, it seems to have been one of those things that's now out there in the ether. Uh, and we're getting twenty teenage girls, young women, coming along to most of those sessions. We've, we've, uh, booked twenty-five places tomorrow night for an ice skating trip to Winter Wonderland. So fingers crossed it goes well. I might even have a go myself, seeing I'm not driving the minibus. But, um, yeah, and that is, it's just really quite positive at the moment. Quite interestingly, for some of the skate park sessions, um, our youth work colleagues in Stoke Gifford, there's a couple of sessions where, uh, they've been short of staff for some of the work that they've done. So they've actually sent over one of their members of staff to work with us, which is really nice for us to have an additional member of staff and work together and, and, uh, uh, now that, we had two of their workers actually on, on Thursday. And both are quite interested in going on our casual bank of staff, which is, which is quite good. They had, they both had very positive experiences working alongside us and felt quite infused. And it's nice to get sort of, almost like an external look at the work that we're doing and the relationships we have with some of the young people, um, that they also work with in a different environment. Um, been doing a bit of training, I know this sounds a bit left-field, but one of the things we're working on, sort of gain a link to some of the self-help schemes and the furniture and fittings. A bit like we built our own picnic benches and all the rest of it for the skate park. Uh, we've, we're looking at designs for that sort of trendy scaffolding wood type fix, fixtures and fittings. But I thought we've got to do that. I need to, um, go on an abrasive wheels training course, the joys of the job. So I did a half-day course in that, so I could now, uh, cut scaffolding poles legitimately without breaking health and safety legislation. And we will probably save a phenomenal amount of money on building some of the fixtures and fittings. But also the young people will then be involved in putting things together, uh, which I always think is the way we can, should go within health and safety and reason, because it again promotes ownership. Uh, recruitment, um, we need to have a proper splurge, but all the stuff that we've been sort of putting out, we've had very little interest. It seems to be the same problem across the area. I don't know. Youth work is quite a challenging job, so I don't know if people are, uh, sometimes a bit deterred from it. But one of the things I was talking about at a partnership meeting, and I think there is quite some enthusiasm, is maybe we need to do like a, a joint South Gloss youth work recruitment fair type event. So that a lot of youth projects across the area could all collectively invite people along who are interested. So we could have a bigger publicity splurge collectively, you know, if you've got two part-time jobs, it might create the opportunity for people to have a significant post across two different locations and two different employers. So trying to look creatively at that sort of, that sort of problem. Um, any questions other than that section?
Might it worth taking forward some kind of recruitment fair sort of thing, like pulling everybody together?
I think so, because we, as a sort of, the youth work partnership again is the one that, um, our lot, just to remind people, there's, the, the whole of South Gloss is divided into three lots. Uh, and lot one is sort of Filton, Bradley Stoke, Stoke Gifford, um, Patchway, Thornbury. Um, and we're looking at joint training as well, so we're trying to sort of re-establish some, um, level two and level three youth work and training courses. So training and it's a sort of logical sister function really, isn't it? That you could be promoting training as part of the recruitment package as well, which is the way we used to do things when we had more comprehensive youth services, that, you know, you would, you would be appointed to a post on the condition that you were prepared to engage in qualification training as part of, of part of that recruitment process.
Something to take aside, or something that we could look at running in.
Well, we are talking with South Gloss, South Gloss have been at these meetings, so you're talking about people like, um, Sharon Adams, who's the, the commission officer for the, the youth offer monies that we're drawing down and. Um, yeah, we had, uh, four, four South Gloss people at our previous partnership meeting a couple of weeks ago, so yeah. And there's also been a lot of multi-agency meetings, because I think we touched on this before, because the whole thing about information sharing protocols and safeguarding have been, um, a concern, I think, uh, for myself and across areas, because, um, one of the things that has happened as youth work has sort of cascaded down more from local authorities to town and parish councils and voluntary sector organisations. As a professional youth worker, I would be party to information sharing protocols across those agencies. But now, as a town council, we're not. And a lot of us are now saying, we're making the case that that just seems, that needs to be sorted. And I think South Gloss are now realising.
Because roles are reversed, you know, things have moved from down to our levels.
Yeah, you're a youth worker doing maybe the same role, but you're working for a town or parish council as opposed to the local authority. And all of a sudden, you're excluded from information and how that is in the best interests of the child, uh, is, is, um.
Yeah, it's kind of recognised that, that youth work is filtering down to the lower level.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that like databases and things like that that you're affiliated from, that's helped by the local authority?
Well, if I give you a, uh, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but a practical example, I was at an ASB antisocial behaviour case study meeting. And we, I did, um, made my contribution, uh, and so did the Willbrook Centre and so did the Leisure Centre. And then we're all excluded from any discussion and action. So you're seen as a professional youth worker in the same category as important job that they do as a local shopping centre and a leisure centre. Uh, whereas all the other professionals who are part of the local authority or schools who are now part of the local authority protocols, even though they're private academy trusts, have, yeah, the law has been adjusted to share information, but it hasn't for youth workers. So in terms of the South Gloss Youth Partnership, hardly any of us, well, none of us now are employed directly by the local authorities. We work for town, parish councils, voluntary sector organisations, and now we're, so we're all raising the point, which is now being accepted that something needs to change. Information, important information in the best interests of the child should be a two-way process. It shouldn't be a sort of like an information sharing hierarchy where we feed information in, but we never get any information back. Um, it's, yeah, it's a bit of an anomaly, which I think people have been sort of knocking at the door and repeating the argument that that's, yeah, during the last period, there's been quite a lot of discussion and quite a lot of meetings at different levels.
Obviously it's not been, sorry, Jerry, it's not been, uh, something which, uh, they've done purposely to keep you out of the loop. It's just basically a product of what you just said, because, you know, you're now employed by the town rather than coming up from the other area. And that information in reality is obviously really important, uh, so.
I think it's traditional protocols as opposed to, as you say, yeah, purposely saying, you're not going to hold them. It's never done, it's not, that's not the norm, but Graham said it's not about reinventing it to make it the norm.
It is a fear that you break in data protection protocols.
Yeah.
But if you look at any safeguarding documentation or government papers or South Gloss papers, they say that information should never be withheld if the interests of the child
Yeah.
uh, are endangered because of withholding that information. But it's almost like the fear of sharing information is greater than.
Because of the GDPR.
That's one of the reasons it's given, but there is quite clear in, in, that's the point, in information sharing protocols that you, yeah, GDPR is there, but you should not, not share information.
No, you can't have a moral.
We, we've all seen over the last, what, five, six, seven years, how long have you been with us now? Youth work has evolved and youth work has become less concentric, as in youth gloss provision. It's come down to, to our levels and not just here in Bradley Stoke, but across the board. But thing, as, as Brian has said, we've progressed, but the things that have been put in place haven't moved with the times and unfortunately they need to.
Another stark example is when I first worked for Bradley Stoke, I was seconded from South Gloss to work for Bradley Stoke. So I would have been doing my role and had been party to that information share. But as soon as I then started working for Bradley Stoke directly, doing the same or similar role, then I was excluded. And it's like, that's.
We're gonna have to.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you need any district, county to help on that?
That's how class is sort of, it's just, yeah, there's a lot of senior people who are now, um, trying to sort it. But it's just like, it's just all, we had to make a lot of noise to.
Email Frank in the.
I think, I think what.
Speak to this person.
How did you know? Was the acknowledgement from some senior person in South Gloss that actually you should be receiving this information. And that obviously they got them thinking, hang on a minute, why aren't places?
It's kind of productive, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's legal press, it really is.
And, and like I've sort of politely made the point at one meeting that if something did go badly wrong and there was a serious case review, one of the outcomes of serious case reviews are usually that, information was not shared appropriately and as it should have been. So to be sort of not sharing information because of GDPR and because of extreme interpretation of GDPR.
Didn't share the information correctly.
So would it not be worth, if you do come across things that are really causing issues, that you do speak to your frank in the morning?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, please do, yeah.
I al, I always copy Sharon into all my lengthy correspondence with various people.
And I have, I have discussed with you, you know, sort of including South Gloss councils, if there is something which they could actually try to.
We can go marching, Eric, that way. We demand the information be released for our youth work.
How many, uh, people are at school in that, the town council or youth work?
Town councils, Sharon will probably know the policy better than me, though, isn't it? It's something about.
Southern Brooks also doing the same, Southern Brooks is doing.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're all saying the same thing, my colleagues at Southern Brooks, my colleagues from Creative Youth Networks, from, uh, voluntary organisations in Thornbury, from Face and Filton. We're all saying, yeah, we're sort of united in saying that this should change.
It's, Southern Brooks, so because they are, they are actually relating with the schools in another part of their organisation, where you do get information back and forth, but then obviously you're not familiar with it, you have to share it with the youth organisation. It's the same people, but sometimes it's all those things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's strange.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it's for child protection, it should be able to share the information, um, so if.
No, we share, we share it, but it's not shared with us. So that's, that's what I mean, so information sharing. So that's, that's what I mean, so information sharing hierarchy.
Share that with you if you're dealing with kids who are in difficult situations, you need access to that information.
All, yeah, all vulnerable, um it's not even that, it's like there was one meeting, they were talking about, oh, the the four young people in Bradley Stoke, and we all know who they are, and I'm saying, well, I don't know who they are. You know, I can guess who they are, but they, so you're having this like conversation where no one will say the name of these people that everybody in the room knew their names and had talked about separately. And and how's that, you know, I could be, I could be working alongside those people on a regular basis. And surely I could then have positive informational, you know, nudge theory, all that, positively signposting them, challenging them. Without actually talking about the, you know, in.
It's happened to us all the time in South Gloss. You know, if people assume, that people know.
Yeah.
Contact ICO.
Information Commissioner's Office.
Oh, right.
Contact them because they'll know more about the the rules and regs around all that.
But surely I think.
It's the, it's the interpretation in the legislation which says about local authorities. And the definition of local authorities is actually pointing a principle in authorities, not parish and county councils, that's where the issue arises.
And there lies the problem, yeah.
So it's legislation.
Yeah.
But certainly, I think if if you need help and you need information, then these guys.
But but the other thing I sort of say uh about it is that, you know, schools used to be under the jurisdiction of the local authority, they shared information. Then schools become separate organisations and they put in a protocol to bypass that and to share information. So that's the example of doing that, do you know what I mean?
Tom says everybody's scared to death of GDPR as well, which hasn't helped the situation. Okay.
Right, um. Yeah, back to the, this is something, you mentioned something today, I I'm still chasing up. The people who, the 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 all singing and dancing thing that people were quite keen on in terms of the Jubilee Green, um I'm not pretending I've been on to it every day, but about three times since the last meeting, I've chased chased up in um I won't name the company, but you've heard through your networks that they can be a bit remiss in terms of.
But that was after sales service, not before sales service.
So maybe, maybe maybe that's useful information, though, isn't it? But um this particular company, although they've got.
This will run.
Because you've said that they've even, you've put read receipts on the emails and you can see that they've read the email, but that they don't respond. They obviously don't want to quote the work.
And we're trying to buy something off them, I don't understand, you know, I don't understand.
They've got money.
It's a lot of money, though, it's not just like fifty quid, is it? It's thousands of pounds worth of stuff.
Don't buy them, don't let them buy them.
They'll probably answer about a year's time.
So, yeah, I I do need to, um that one's been on a just chasing them up, but we've we've sort of, as you know from previous reports, we've sort of got there, we know what we want, we, but.
So is that the only holdout?
I think.
No, he's still looking for.
Yeah, and we, yeah, but we want, we want to know exactly what the costings are, and that's the sort of final thing. But because we had the consultation, we talked with you guys, we've refined the package. But now we want the costings for the package so we can start trying to draw down the money, but there's other, there's other companies out there.
Company, somebody might be older or something.
No, they're.
They're huge.
They do a lot of stuff.
A lot of people might be older.
And when they're all.
No, I've been, I was getting read receipts from two different people, so I was like checking that one, I was trying to keep that one coming.
And when it's in situ, all the councillors are going to put their spandex on and get out of there and stuff.
Yeah, we've got to do a Bradley Stoke town council.
Are they already in your other projects?
Sorry?
Are they?
They did a big quote for.
Big funny.
Um uh.
I wear it every day.
Babies, didn't they, the children's area? Yeah.
So they already have this.
No, no, they've, they've done quotes, but maybe. Maybe that's what they think we're doing, we're just using them for quotes, you know, and not.
Not putting them forward.
I think perhaps they want, they're feeling that you want to muddle them. Right, okay.
Okay.
But we're not sharing for them.
Shall we move on and after that, anything else? That's that's covered everything, isn't it?
And the mother as well is.
Yeah, yeah, same, same.
Similar situation.
Well, same company as well.
You know, we feel they're down the middle, yeah, which I feel that they can actually learn something else, I think.
Okay.
Well, I'm feeling refreshed in the new year, I will have a.
Good challenge for the new year. Moving onwards, item seven, uh we've done seven point one, seven point two. Bradley Stoke and Blue Matt take by steering group, sorry if I thought it was.
Say that exactly the moment I was yawning though. Um uh, what can I say, um you may have heard that we got an email saying that um you've got a certificate and you'll be pleased with the result. And it was a level five outstanding, and the clue is there is no level six. So we effectively got a, got a gold.
Well done.
Do you sound proud?
We weren't the only ones in Bradley Stoke, we were, Bradley Stoke was a double gold winner. Um Natricare on Woodlands Lane also received a gold in the business and leisure area. I had the pleasure of taking this certificate round and presenting it. And I have been waiting ever since for photographs of that um symbol. So which is why I haven't given you anything, because I thought you'd like both in the newsletter.
I know, it's me thinking you would.
Not that great.
I will send it with read receipts.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, thank you, I'll only note that on behalf of town council, we put our appreciation and congratulations to Bradley Stoke in blue and I will note that.
What was the actual, um it was a level five outstanding certificate for what?
Uh in your neighbourhood.
In your neighbourhood, that's it.
Um.
Was that Bristol award?
And I think we have, we have it on our website anyway, haven't we, in those.
Yes, it is, and and you've actually got a a framed copy of the certificate.
We have, yeah.
You tested somewhere along the line, did you get a certificate? Did you get a certificate from Bristol or something? Because I saw an evening poster something like that. You were awarded some kind of certificate from Bristol.
Were we?
Yeah, like it was, it was actually a Bristol thing, you know, so for Bradley Stoke, it actually said, it was Bradley Stoke and Bristol. It was just basically the way the evening poster award, you know, Renet, you know, this award was given to Bradley Stoke.
Is that this year or last year?
No, recently, and I thought they got that wrong, because it was, it was. You read it as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because it was, it was really like, you were in Bristol, you were like living in Bristol, awarded to you in Bristol for this thing. But I would say, don't they, Bradley Stoke's in Bristol, you know.
But we're not, we're South, South Gloss, aren't we?
We're in South Gloss. Top Bristol park waste in Bristol, the science parks in Bristol, it just goes on and off.
Last year, we won our Bees Needs Award, which was one of only nineteen awarded in the country. And the first we heard about it was some um councillor who we had never heard of and who had never heard of us had kindly gone down to um the Eden Project to collect our award for us. So it wouldn't, wouldn't surprise me if there's something else kicking around that we haven't.
So South Gloss. Well, I'd really like to thank you because you've been going on for how many years now and.
I've been going on for a long time.
I I remember having three mi- three meetings with all of you, trying to persuade you to all come and forth. And you've done such an absolutely fantastic job for this area, congratulations to get the golden award.
Well, thank you, I I think.
One thing for you following through, I think, is not James originally suggested it, so probably something a bit.
But it's brightened the place up immensely, it does.
But, you know, your leadership on partnership was very important always, and we've done a lot of work on it. And we worked on the main, the market.
We did describe um the mannequin roundabout, just the roundabout that gave Bradley Stoke its heart. Because when Debbie the heifer got stolen, it it really was such an outcry.
It has always been social media.
It has, yeah, I mean, the returned photographs, nine and a half thousand views a day. So um and our steps out the back of wheat field that we painted in rainbow colours, um they have four and a half thousand. Four and a half thousand views, two and a half thousand engagements, and what a single negative comment. Which I think is probably quite a record, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But there's not a big roundabout that needs doing.
I know, I know, I don't have that actually.
You don't?
Yeah.
Oh, you're honest, tell me.
And we've got a lot of trees to plant, both through Green Gym and through one of the carbon offset companies. Um they arrived on Thursday, we had hoped to plant them on Saturday, but it's too cold. If you put them in and the ground's freezing, you just kill them off, so I would rather do it properly and do it at a time that is good for the plants rather than a time that is good for us to say we did it in National Tree Week. I'd rather do it properly and make sure they survive, and it it's great, these councils, they're going to plant all these trees, but they're tiny little whips. It's gonna be years.
Not shops, it's trees, is it?
Well, I've I've got a lot of hedging plants, which is one of the things I was going to talk to Sharon about. Um do you need more hedging around the brook court?
Um I would suggest that you speak to John.
Okay, I will do.
Just to wait for him to leave him.
And I I've heard, yes, and so.
How much, you got, how much hedging?
Um we had about four hundred.
Oh.
Four hundred hedges.
Four hundred trees and plants.
Well, trees, hedging, plants, shrubs.
So where do you think put the trees?
I went to the carbon neutral, um carbon offset meeting or whatever it was, um and one of the things was what is stopping people doing these things? And um a lot of the conversation was uh South Gloss Council. On the one hand, they're saying we're taking part in the tree week, it's the first time they've done it, even though it's been going since nineteen eighty-four. Um they're saying that we're going to do all this, and then on the other hand, they're telling us, I've got to have a planting licence to put a tree in the ground, even on the nature reserve. Even if I'm replacing, for example, one of the orchard trees that has died.
So how much is a planting licence for you?
Hmm?
Is it a cost associated with a planting licence?
No, no, he he just thinks there might be a gas main under the ground.
Oh, yeah, okay, so the the roots.
Yeah, but but certainly on the nature reserve, if there wasn't a gas main there three months ago, there isn't going to be one there now.
So are they, are they refusing to give you the license? Is there no way you've been able to obtain licence?
I have to apply through John Morris for planting licences.
But it doesn't cost you anything?
It doesn't cost me anything, apart from nagging.
The process of going through it is the pain.
And quite often they refuse. We've still got the tree charter tree. We've got one of only eight hundred in the country, tree charter trees. Um and I've still not been given permission to put that in anywhere.
Are we able to do on Bradley Stoke and Bloom's behalf to request a licence?
Well, but it it's not, it's not.
If she's having problems getting a licence from them.
It's, it's.
Everybody has problems, it's not, it's not just her, Sarah.
Although I did joke, but I am on auto delete with South Gloss Council.
Is it John who's dealing with it, or?
Hmm?
Is it John or?
It it seems to every, everything to be John, to John Morris, and he's so overworked.
I would suggest that you speak to the South Gloss councillors, because they might know things along.
Tell you the truth.
Quite often, Gary Mayes. Gary Mayes is meant to be our contact, and I have never been told that he is no longer our contact. And I just email him and say, we're taking over plot number seventy-eight. Um I've notified them.
So so you know where you want to plant them, it's just you need the licence for them.
Supposedly, yeah.
And it's basically um in Savage's Wood, what, in that area around there somewhere?
Uh no, we put something by the skate park this time. We're going to put the cherry trees in, I can't remember the plot number, um but it's by Trench Lane.
Okay.
Because we've been really keen on doing um.
Have you got like a little drawing to show where it is? Because if you send one through to me, because you've got my, I give it to Sarah.
Hmm.
And obviously to Franklin, and they can then contact the officer and say, look, we need this, how long are these trees? Um gonna be before they uh they wilt or whatever, you know, I mean, because you've got to be putting up these little whips.
Um I've been sticking with pots for the moment.
Yeah, but how, I mean, real, real, you know, realistically, I mean, how, when do you want this? By, middle of January or something or?
It'd be nice, but again, it will depend on the weather, if it is cold, I'd just.
Okay, we can, we can do with that, too, just just send the, just send the thing through uh to uh myself and Franklin, and I'll make, I'll make sure it's Sarah, and we can go on to uh to do something.
What trees are they?
I've got, I've given cherries.
All nice.
Um because we really want to do another community orchard.
Yeah.
Um and we thought this um area down by Trench Lane would be ideal. Um we've spoken to a couple of people who didn't have success in putting orchards on slopes. But that wasn't because it was a slope, that was because of the ground, so that's.
And.
That's.
What, what's your best time to plan, trying to plant these trees? What is the best time you're planning to plant?
National Tree Week is is the first weekend of December.
Oh, that sounds good.
Uh yeah, it.
It's too bad.
There's no sunlight, isn't it?
Did they come through John trees?
No, no, they're right.
Is it a growth book or not?
No, um they've mainly come through um the woodland trust.
That's where you plant them in the ground.
And the the last hundred or so come from the carbon offset company.
They've got a chivalry plant all the way around. Sure, you've inverted your licence and all the certificates you got.
The whipstick had a grain. Okay.
All right.
Um so whether we need to pick a form of that, which we mentioned earlier?
I don't think so, would you do it?
I'm kidding, so we'll take you to that anyway.
Friends just asking. Oh, you give a thanks. It's just recorded, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's just recorded a minute ago. Okay, thank you, thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Item nine is to agree, the time of next meeting, Monday the seventeenth of February twenty twenty next year, seven p.m. Bradley Stoke, we send us a happy new year to everybody for next year.
Andy, can I just say, actually, darling, okay, um I think this relates to youth, because there's a crossing, there was a mum who did so much petitioning in the local area for that crossing on Brookway, and nothing seems to.
It's on the list, it's on the reputation list.
Takes a year.
It's a long one. It is, at least it is in the system, so that's very positive.
Incident to happen before they're going to do something.
It can't, it can't just be swimming on that, just take a look at the.
But there's so many young people are hanging around that area.
They they will take a while, which I agree with you is wrong, when it comes to children having to cross a busy road like that. Because she does her, does volleyball.
Yeah, she did all that, and she got all these signatures, she did all that, and it seems like.
It's work, it's work, what she's done.
Yeah.
Yes, it has worked.
It is current thread, yeah, but it does go on a list.
Because it was on Facebook and I contacted.